If we could go ahead and call our meeting to order, please. If I could ask, whoever would please stand for a moment of silence and then Mr. Conway to lead us in the pledge of the flag.
Pledge. Pledge of the flag. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Shall we call the robe?
Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Mrs. Butcher-Collie?
Here.
Mrs. Singer-Eardley?
Here.
Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mrs. Tingle-Saints?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Thank you. We have a full house. So we certainly have a forum. If, in your packet, you should have a copy of the minutes from our last regularly scheduled meeting of February the 12th, if you'd like to look those over for any possible corrections or additions.
May I make a motion for approval?
Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion's been made in a second. If there are no corrections, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Also in your packet, you each should have received a copy of our latest check register. If you can indicate if you've received that. Thank you. Okay. That gets us to the public comments portion of our meeting. And the first person to sign up is Mr. James Robert Williamson.
I put my name on there. This is James Robert, James R.
JR.
He's trying to get nine minutes.
Yeah, thank you.
Trying to get a little more time. I'm here, I've got two topics I'd like to talk to you all about tonight. First, the flooding on South Broadway and Ely Alley. While I'm making a presentation, I hope you all don't mind. I've got some pictures of the Bradshaw property that you all purchased a few years ago to come up with retention pond. I don't know if the pictures are doing justice, but it just kind of shows what kind of land you own up there. I think, according to my records, I found out today, you all still own forty-three thousand acres, forty-three acres up there. And after you sold off forty-three, no, you sold off, wait a minute, let me see, forty-three acres you sold, or do you retain? Do you all know?
We don't, we don't own any on the Bradshaw, do we?
You own the bottom where the water comes through, yeah.
All right, I think you got forty-three acres. You sold thirty-four acres to the Highlanders in eighty, oh-eight and oh-nine. That left a balance for that land, one million and twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollars, according to the figures I got from the courthouse. So that's a pretty substantial investment, and that's the reason I brought these pictures. And I went to church the other day and asked the preacher to give me calm to come in here tonight. And one of the remarks was made that says, "No servant is greater than his master." So I look at you all as servants and the public and the citizens being masters. So I'm asking for you all to look at this as, we're asking you all to do something, you know, for the public. One of my, another thing that caught my attention is six-oh-seven South Broadway was purchased by the city and then turned around and sold to William Singer, and the difference in the price was sixty-nine thousand. And I don't know how, when I was told that they were going to take that ditch and do something with that yard to do something with retention of water, do any of you previous mayors or anything remember that?
That, that was retention from up in Indian Hills, Indian Acres.
But I don't think, was anything ever done to that waterway to restrict the water back?
The only thing that I can remember is just allowing that to be an easement to hold it.
So that's where the sixty-nine thousand dollar investment came for just to get an easement to do that, right?
Well, there's a little bit more behind, the story behind that, but, sorta.
Well, I've been working on this for twenty-six years. You're all wondering why I'm here. I'm not a city citizen. My parents lived at four-eleven South Broadway. They were flooded in nineteen ninety-two substantially. You can't get flood insurance in that part of the community because it's not a flood plain. It's just flash flooding from stormwater. What I'm here to talk about is hopefully you all can come up with something, because they lost, that one particular thing, lost everything in the basement, had three automobiles washed out of the driveway, happened to be one of mine, which I didn't have collision insurance, so that was a loss of mine. But Tom, I don't know if Tom even remembers, right after that, Tom and I had a little conversation about trying to get rid of some of that. Tom, you remember that? We were trying to take it to the landfill and y'all wouldn't pay for it, and I told you I'd dump it in the city door.
We've had many conversations. I'm not sure I can recall them all.
Yeah, but anyway. And I think he knew I'd do it. But anyway, the point I'm trying to make is this been going on a long time, folks. I think I even can, ma'am, sorry, Ms. Sains, I think I came to you when you were mayor. She even actually, when I, when she walked in and saw me tonight, she says, "Looks like you're here for flooding again." And the reason I'm here and talking about to you all tonight is that, Tom, I think you made a campaign promise to me that you'd deal with this, and I think you said you have been doing some things. But I was at the fiscal court meeting the other night, and I heard about you all were fixing to do another joint venture with them. And the reason I'm bringing the fiscal court up is, is that if you all don't have enough money, George Lesby's always sat over and talked about he's got a rainy day fund, and I didn't know if you all could do a joint venture to try to eliminate this. If you look at these pictures of that retention pond, it's the most ridiculous thing ever I've seen is a retention pond. Mr. Lesby, you've built a lot of retention ponds on some of your property. You ever had one that had that big of a drainage pipe in it to try to, you're supposed to retain the water for a while?
Well, there's, there's two kinds. There's detention and there's retention. As I recall, that, that system, I'm not an expert by any means, but that system was supposed to capture the water, slow it down, kind of choke it down so it would flow out slowly, yeah, at a controlled pace.
Well, you look at that, that pipe, that, you know.
It was, you know.
Well, but what I'm saying is, is look at the pictures. There's a lot of room, if the state won't let you add to that one, there's enough land you could go back and catch some water back again and slow it down and slow it down.
Here's what they told us, I do recall this, I don't know if anybody was involved at the time, maybe Karen was or Marvin, I'm not sure, but they said, "The Bradshaw property is not going to solve the problem. There was no doubt, ifs, ands, or buts about it. It wasn't going to solve the problem, it was going to dramatically help the problem." It's helped. There's no doubt it's helped.
Well, they're still getting flooded.
But, but what we had to do is we got to go downtown, and we got to put in some millions of dollars' worth of underground stormwater improvements to take care of the problem. The Singer property, as it is now, Karen's right, I mean, we purchased that, we created an easement area, there were some improvements, I believe, made up in Gatewood, perhaps?
Yeah.
Matter of fact, I've got an item I was going to bring up tonight, that I think they've had some erosion up there, and maybe an opening in a sinkhole or something.
I've heard about that.
That Public Works is filled and needs to be refilled, that's just part of the, you know, part of the process. But, but the Bradshaw wasn't the end-all-be-all to the water problems downtown Georgetown.
Well, that's, it's got a pretty substantial price tag to it if it didn't solve, or, you know, but, you know, I'm just drawing at straws here.
Yeah.
That was the only thing we're talking. I'm just asking you all to finally try to come up, you know, the reason I brought up with the joint venture, we're going out here looking at trying to...
Well, you know, the county did help with the Bradshaw. I think they donated six-hundred thousand dollars to that project, if I'm not mistaken.
But what I'm saying is, is that I hear of new projects?
Right.
That you are going to spend millions of dollars on.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I was hoping we'd take a step back and fix the old part of it before we create something new.
Right, right. Well, we, you know, we spent hundreds, hundreds of thousands of dollars down on Washington Street to take care of those, those problems. And that was, it's been a while, Mayor, I guess it was probably right after your, your prior term, perhaps?
Yeah, after my prior.
But anyway.
I don't want to take a lot of time.
No, no.
Have you looked at revitalization grants? We did Mulberry Street, we've done, you know, I'm just, these people are, you know, they've had enough rainy days.
You know, they have. And you know what happened, JR, quite honestly, when Karen became mayor, the economy went to heck, and we couldn't afford any more projects. You know, I mean, we were lucky to get by. But we've made significant improvements, at least since I've been involved in council, it seems like we've, we've, you know, consistently done stormwater improvements in multiple areas. We're working on them right now that the state probably created when they put in the bypass.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we're doing things, and the county's participating in many other ways, and we're asking to participate in quite a few that are coming up.
But didn't we, I don't know if Cal did this before he left, we have our engineers gone.
Yeah.
But didn't we fund Cal to be able to do some pictures and do some engineering underneath Broadway and areas of mayor?
Well, we did, and just so you all know, JR and I have almost an hour conversation Friday evening.
Okay.
So we talked about this in all length. At that point, I asked you if you were coming tonight, you said no, so...
What I took is an invitation to come.
Well, then, we're always, we're always glad to have you, but what, what I explained in that meeting is that the city's done a number of things since then. We've undertaken storm, water basin studies that we've reported to you all, and we've done several of those watersheds so that we understand the whole of the stormwater picture so that when we do have the resources to do a significant project, we'll know what we need to do. The difficulty is that we know what the solution is, and the solution's been brought to the city council repeatedly in the past. But a six-and-a-half million dollar price tag and completely disrupting downtown, the council has not elected to take that on. And until we finish the watershed studies and have all of the data that we, we need so that we can start prioritizing projects, and, so I do believe that the council has taken significant steps. I can't say there wasn't water on Broadway because there absolutely is. The very oldest part of our town has stormwater infrastructure that's a hundred years old. It was built for a town of four or five thousand people. And that was when it was in perfect operating condition. I doubt we're in perfect operating condition today. The other thing that, that, this happens too often, but we recently had an extraordinary rain event. I don't know if you all watched the news, it wasn't just Georgetown, it wasn't just South Broadway. We had people's basements flooded in Georgetown that had been dry for a hundred years. The nine next-door neighbor up on Broadway, which is a pretty steep hill, there was a fire truck there for six hours pumping out their basement. This was a remarkable water event, and when that much water happens, our system will fail every time.
It's all about the stormwater.
But we are doing the engineering work so we can understand it better, and eventually we need a giant pipe to handle all of this water underground, get it all the way down to the spring bottom. That's the low point, and it all comes in this way. And we, over the years, have added substantial amounts of roofs and parking lots and driveways, and it increases water runoff. So I think, I think your, your council is very aware of the problem and trying to make some strides, JR.
All right, thank you for that. I was hoping, I hate to take your time, but I've got one more topic that you and I discussed.
You go ahead.
I wonder if you all have heard about the people in northern Scott County, which is our problem, and your all's problem is the landfill. A lot of people out here don't understand when they see WSP, that's Waste Services of the Bluegrass, same people own it that own Central Kentucky landfill. Trying to educate the public. I spent twenty-some years trying to do that, and I failed miserably. So anyway, what I'm trying to do here is, is that Tom and I had some conversations, that you are concerned about the cost of collection disposal if the landfill was shut down. Landfill's not going to shut it down. What a lot of us are trying to do, we're trying to choke it down. I don't know if you all are aware that that permit, which I tried to control the host agreement, tells you how many counties you can put on. When I was over there, I tried to choke it down to where we could just take all contiguous counties, because the state wants you to do regional landfill. I wanted to do contiguous counties excluding Fayette County, because they've got such a massive volume. I don't know if the public knows in the city that they've got numerous, they've got sixty-four counties, and on some of their advertising, they're advertising to Ojai and Indiana, that they're trying to get all this waste in here. We shouldn't worry about shutting the landfill down, we should worry that they're going to fill it up so fast that then we don't have any. Then you got to worry about the hazardous waste they put in it. They've had numerous of NOBs. My wife told me to be sure to tell everybody, NOBs stands for Notice of Violation. I don't know if you all know it or not, just here in the month of February, they got another Notice of Violation with a twenty thousand dollar price tag, were you all aware of that? Well, it was because the hazardous waste they took from GIS out here, they didn't properly cover it to where it would keep from spreading and leaching into the rest of the landfill. So they got another NOB.
JR, the, the GIS waste?
Yes.
That's been well documented and well written about.
Well.
Those materials were crushed TV screens, and as an individual, you or I either one can legally take those to the landfill.
But when you...
You were aware of that, weren't you?
Well, yes.
It was only called hazardous waste because a commercial hauler took it. So let's talk about facts, but let's not unnecessarily scare people. Things that you and I can legally take to a landfill aren't hazardous.
Okay, let's say this then, Tom. If you just scattered it, and I throw one out this week, and you throw out one next week, and she throws out one, they're scattered out, they're not crunched up and put in one thing. Landfills, you have to get a special permit to put it in, it's called special waste. This is not special waste. So now you've got that large amount in one area of that landfill, if you want to talk apples and apples. But this guy that owns this, he's the one, did you ever hear of the landfill up in Ashland? And the train came down, you could smell it before you could hear it from New York? This same guy that owns our landfill is the one that permitted that landfill, and he's the one that got the New York contract. Now what he wants to do, this is past, this is past record, that's all you can go on. He wants to build up this volume of waste, get this permit down there, and he's going to sell it to the highest bidder, and they're going to bring it everywhere. Did any of you by any chance get to watch last week, they had a movie on HBO called The Atomic Home Run, in St. Louis, Missouri? If you haven't seen it, you might want to look at it. It's Republic Services, it's another big solid waste, waste hall. They've got a landfill up there that's on fire. They can't put it out. It's up under those synthetic liners, and it's burning. It's got atomic waste that the federal government generated and they're testing to make atomic bomb, and they put it in, in that landfill. It's leaking out along creeks up there. People are dying, the kids are dying of cancer, they're probably dying of cancer, Tom, but in this geographic area, the numbers are higher. They take, I think it was the Corps of Engineers went along the creek behind their house, and the guys were going off. They can't sell their houses.
JR, we can talk about Love Canal, and we can talk about environmental issues everywhere. What does it have to do with the landfill in Scott County, Kentucky?
It has to do with, all right, with that being said, I'll stop on landfill. Let's just talk about this community's history with solid waste. Do you mind?
We're under public comments, JR, take a couple more minutes.
All right, I'll be real brief.
I'm not going to debate with you, you've got a couple more minutes.
All right, all right, couple more minutes. Let's talk about the mismanagement of waste that we've got in the past. Do you, any of you remember Prior Hill? How many millions that cost us? We had to spend two or three million dollars to put sewer lines to Sims Road, Double Cobert, to deal with the leak date, to run out of those. I'd hate to see what the bill is this month, I don't know how much it costs. So my point being is, you, that you've got to watch waste.
JR, JR, that, that extension to Sadieville was an investment, I mean, Sadieville had to have something, so they, they paid for a portion of it, the county paid for a portion of it, we paid for a portion of it, I think the state paid for a portion of it, plus it saved us a hundred and some thousand dollars in disposal of our leak date.
That's what I'm saying.
It was an investment.
But it's the cost, but it's the cost of mismanagement.
It saved us money, in the long run, it saved Scott County money. I remember the numbers. I had to vote on it.
Well, but what I'm saying is, it's, it's an ongoing, that's what I'm trying to tell people.
I know that, but you make it sound like it was a, you know, a catastrophe, and we're losing money on it. It was an investment, it was a necessary investment.
Okay. All right, Fayette County, I want to educate the public, I'll be real brief, the contract with Fayette County to go to this landfill has a kick-out clause. I want everybody to know that it's July nineteenth of next year. Either one of them get out of it, the city can get out of the landfill, get it. I challenge the people of this community, maybe at least get Fayette County's waste out of it, because it's such a large volume, and this, that, and the others. And there's another thing, real brief, Tom, the budget, we're listening to the governor talking about the budget. I helped pass the law through legislation in nineteen ninety-eight, what's called the Trust, Waste Tire Trust Fund. And that comes off a dollar of a tire sold every time you buy a new tire. That's about four million that's been sold in this state every year. Two-point-five million's turned in, there's a million and a half dollars unaccounted for since day one. So I'd like the people to tell the governor to try to find that thirty million dollars that's shortfall in this, in this state from just one legislation. So you know, thank you, Tom.
Thank you, JR. Appreciate it.
You got my picture.
Handing them back.
Oh.
Unless you can use it.
Got them memorized, thank you. The other thing that, that I've assured Mr. Williamson, and today assured Mr. Price, that when we get our engineer on board, we will ask them to reevaluate the drainage basin on Bradshaw Farm and confirm or tell us to change. And that when we get our new engineer on board, we would be willing to address that concern, and I promised Mr. Williamson we would do that.
That's, that's fair enough, Mayor, and I think we would all agree. Every now and then, it probably needs to be inspected by maybe our engineer or someone that's capable of telling us if, if it needs to be bush hogged, or cleaned out, or dredged, or whatever the case may be.
So I felt like the council would want us to respond positively with, we're willing to reevaluate it from an engineering perspective, and we will.
We've had several floods, they're not going to stop. You all keep talking, I'll be real brief, these rains are going to keep coming, they're not going to stop coming. So thank you.
Yes, sir. Next on the list for public comments, we have Ms. Candace Whitehouse and Emily McCaffrey.
Hi. I'm going to text these out.
Please.
While I'm talking, some efficiency. As you all know, Candace Whitehouse, and I'm the director of Scott County Hospitality House. And we are here today to request funding again. Do you have enough time?
That's all right, go ahead, Sheriff David.
Here.
Okay. Thank you. Sheriff.
Be careful.
Spring that water.
Who put that there?
So that letter is fairly similar to last year's letter. I did want to start off with a thank you for funding us last year. That did not go unrecognized, and that's something that we've been thankful for all year round. And then not only the financial support, but also the different ways that city council and the mayor has supported us throughout the year, attending events, and I know Polly sends encouraging notes, and we are not, we're not ignorant to all the support that you all are giving us. And that means probably more than even the financial support, is to know that you all have our back. And so thank you for that. And we've been willing, we've been able to do a lot of great things over the past year with the funding that you've given us, and we have made lots of leadway. One big, big change that is coming, that we're excited about, and if you were at our dinner theater, we are changing our name, and so we are going to be Elizabeth Village moving forward. We're really, really excited about that. That is something that came with a lot of thought and a lot of prayer, and a lot of talking and conversation. We felt that we had reached a great place, and Scott County Hospitality House had done a lot of good work, but moving forward, as we kind of focus in on what our goals and passions are, and are starting to look at expanding, we felt like it was a good time to change our name to something that more represented us now and us moving forward. So Elizabeth Village has a lot, a lot of meaning, but you don't have that much time for me to stand up here and tell you all about it. But the most obvious way that it represents us is, it really does take a village to make this organization work, and part of that village is you, you all and your support, whether that's in person or financially, you're part of our village, and it takes the whole village to raise people up. And so we're excited about that name, and we feel like the community has already taken that name and has ownership in that name, and so we are excited about moving forward with Elizabeth Village. So you'll see all that officially on our website and things in the next month. So that's exciting. So I will actually do less talking and let Emily tell you a little bit more about where we're going, and I will tell you that in that letter, it says that there's a feasibility study attached. Mayor has that study, if you'd like to read it over with him, or if you'd like your own copy, just let us know, we'd happy, we'd be happy to have coffee with you and go over it with you. Chuck also has a copy, so if you want to bug him for that, so just let us know. So I'll let Emily take it.
So as some of you all may know, the Scott County Hospitality House has been interested in serving the domestic violence population here in Scott County. We noticed that as our organization has been open, we've received a lot of calls from women seeking services who are fleeing a domestic violence situation. And we do not currently serve those women at our transitional home just because they require such different services. But we decided that was something we were going to look into and see how we might be able to get involved. So we hired a consultant to help us conduct a feasibility study for that, and we actually just finished phase one, and so like Candace said, we'd love to give you all a copy. But what we did in phase one is we talked to some organizations and individuals here in our community who might have a valuable perspective and understanding of what domestic violence looked like here in Scott County. So we spoke to the mayor, we spoke to Judge Lesby, Chief Bossy, Megan Shook, the victim's advocate at the police department, and the executive directors of the Shelter Greenhouse Seventeen in Lexington, which is, covers Scott County, and then a private-owned shelter in Richmond called Hope Springs. And we talked to other people, but those were some that really stood out. But, so we talked to those individuals, and then we also gathered some pretty good data. So we began tracking the calls that we received at the Elizabeth Place for women seeking services. And then from July twenty sixteen to October twenty seventeen, we received twenty-six calls, and of those twenty-six, fifteen percent were able to find shelter. So we thought that was a very low number for the amount of women that were seeking services. And then we also spoke to Megan, and she gave us a sample of all of the individuals who called in the month of October, and out of those police reports, thirty-three percent were seeking shelter here in Scott County. So we thought that was a very important point, because yes, there are shelters in Lexington and Richmond, but they are full just because the need is so great, and it's not here in our community, and we'd love for these individuals to stay a part of our community and not run into the barriers of transportation, or having to change jobs, or take your kids out of school. So that is something we would love to get involved with, and because the need is so great, our consultant has recommended we open a shelter here in Scott County. So we're going to move on to phase two and see what that might look like and how we might be able to do that. So we'll definitely need your support and would love to have you all involved in educating the community about this issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Candace and Emily brought by their feasibility report, and we talked about this typical process, agencies that we would consider funding would simply present a letter to Stacy, and, but we thought, it's always helpful for an agency like this to come for the council, present their letter, tell us what they're doing, and this letter will still go to Stacy for the budget request. So thank you all very much. Any questions for Candace or Emily? Next on the public comment list is Mr. Stephen Price.
I'm Stephen Price, I live one-six-seven Rucker Avenue in Georgetown, Kentucky. I was in a meeting earlier today, Chief Bossy was there, he asked me how I'm doing, I told him I feel like a million dollars. Why, I said, is because I've been out digging plum trees today, and every time I do garden work, I told him I feel like a million dollars, I wish I could do it more, intend to do it more. And what this has to do with what I've got to say is that if people who are in physically good shape are much better stewards of everything that they manage, and I, I want to... good shape are much better stewards of everything that they manage, and I want to read to you just a note I made here, a pedestrian's view of Georgetown is very different from that of a motorist. A pedestrian, if he's in shape and walks a lot, sees that he can handle things with his bare hands, that a motorist says, well, I need a machine to do that. And Emerson, you may be acquainted with the name Ralph Walder Emerson, he was a lecturer in the nineteenth century in New England. He defined, in one of his lectures, he defined the word weed. And he says, a weed is any plant, the virtues of which have not yet been discovered. And I'm able to look at weeds and see virtue in them, because I'm physically able to go out there and harvest them for my next salad. And why am I able to do that and see the weeds, see the virtue in the weeds, is because I walk everywhere I go, I'm a pedestrian, and the world to me is something I feel like I can handle, because I'm on my feet all the time. And I urge you, what I'm getting at, is I urge each of you to walk as much as you can and to see this town we live in through pedestrian eyes to the exclusion of the machinery and the high technology that most people assume we need. And in regard to this Bradshaw Farm and the retention dam up there, I was walking one day shortly after the dam was built, not far from my home, just a leisurely neighborhood walk, I arrived there at the dam, and I said to myself, this dam is not going to work. Because as J.R. Williamson just said, there is a four-foot culvert right through the middle of the dam, and unless that culvert has a floodgate on the south end of it, it allows the water to flow through unretained, unrestricted, and unretained means the retention pond is not working. How was I able to see that? I'm not an engineer. How was I able to see that? I was just taking a walk. And I don't need an engineer to tell me that that retention pond, retention basin, it doesn't work, because I'm on my feet all the time, I'm handling buckets of water, I manage the material world I live in, and that enabled me to look at that culvert and see that it was going to cause the retention dam not to work. So that's, I've written a letter to Mayor Prather, and as he said, just subsequent to this recent flooding, about the retention dam on Bradshaw Farm, and I won't go into it, because Mayor Prather, as he said, he assured me that he's aware of my suggestion. I will say this, Mayor Prather, in regard to, let me continue, go back to my notes here. Emerson said, defined a weed as a plant, the virtues of which have not been discovered. I would define the word trash as any material, the virtues of which have not yet been discovered. I'll repeat that, trash is any material, the virtues of which have not yet been discovered. And how do you discover the virtues of trash? You handle it, and you have to save it, and you clean it, and you store it until the day when you realize, I can do this, I can make flower pots out of these tin cans.
Right.
And a pedestrian is able to do, to handle the materials, the reason I'm able to handle materials is because I'm physically fit enough to do it, because I walk. So again, I'm urging you to consider pedestrianism as your best friend and as the best friend of our community. And...
Steve, can I, can I share something? I think it's a detention pond, it's a detention pond, not a retention pond, I believe.
Yep.
And the difference is, the detention temporarily slows down the flow of water. It's designed to capture some of the water and let water flow out at a controlled pace.
That's what the pipes for.
David, there is a four-foot by four-foot culvert through the dam.
Yeah, I think that's...
That was made for that.
And if, sure, the dam is retaining water on both sides of that culvert, but it's not, I don't see any reduction of the South Broadway flooding since the dam was built.
Steve, engineers have a different opinion, and we've said we will have an engineer review your suggestion. That ought to close this conversation.
Except, except, Mayor Prather, let me tell you, you know as well as I, I made you remember, that the town, short after the dam was built, the town engaged an engineering firm in Lexington to study flooding in the South Broadway area, you remember that?
I remember a number of studies, and we're going to have this reviewed, we're going to review your suggestion. That's what you've asked us to do, is to review your suggestion, and we have assured you we're going to do it.
Good, but what I want to say, Mayor Prather, is that these engineers in Lexington, as well as your engineers here on board, between their revolving door resume upgrades, all...
Steve, that's not necessary, and I will trust the judgment of our engineers, and you're finished, thank you.
Well, they're going to rule for have bulldozers and bicos and tricos...
Thank you, Mr. Price.
Because they are...
Thank you, Mr. Price.
They're conus...
I'm sorry, counsel.
That's fine.
It's all right.
Next on the agenda is mayor's comments. Several things I'd like to bring you up to speed on, in addition to the one that is listed, the revenue forecasting issue. Couple of things just to make you aware of, we're all tired of seeing the cemetery wall broken, let me assure you of that. I drive past it every day, and I'm tired of seeing it broken. We have made some pretty significant progress with the concept. We were talking with...
Branstedter Carroll.
Branstedter Carroll, thank you, because this is going to be, this is our entrance to the city, and we want this to look really nice. What they've determined is that we can, we think we can pretty gently slope the terrain right behind the wall, down toward the sidewalk. We can get rid of the, there's a sidewalk behind the wall for some reason. We can get rid of it. In fact, the recommendation is that all of the wall go. The closer I look as I walk it, some of the top blocks have been knocked out, and it looks a little gap too, in addition to the breaks. What the architects have suggested is the concept that we talked with the council about is opening it up so you can see the cemetery better. If they roll the hill down to the sidewalk, on the downhill side where the slope is the greatest, we may have to put in a shortened knee wall, and we could put the fencing, which would look like wrought iron fencing, but they don't make wrought iron fencing anymore, we could put on top of the knee wall and then put it along the top of the earth rise with a periodic stone post to try and mimic the formal entrance. And this would be the look of the entire cemetery front with an open metal-type fence that you can see through, and the contour would kind of come down. We've, we think it's so important that we wanted an architect to help us design it and give us a rendering of it, we know it's going to be pretty expensive, so we've gotten a contract with Branstedter Carroll in the amount of ninety-five hundred dollars.
Will they use any of the old stones back?
Don't think so, Karen. In fact, the difficulty that we had when we considered repairing the break is, we, molds, the same molds aren't there to get the exact look, and even if we could get close to the texture, the color over a hundred years is real different. So the concept here is to open it up and just take down all of the failing masonry. Closer up to the old convenience store, the Mexican restaurant, there's a place where it looks like another freeze thaw cycle or two, it could fall in another place.
Is there anything, can they think of anything, since it is so old, I hate to get, I hate to remove it altogether, do something, since it's historical value to it, but is there anything we can do with that back in the cemetery and use it for some other purpose?
I think we ought to ask Jean about that, and we've got place, we've got room either at the cemetery or at our public works yard, to where if we wanted to clean some of that and have it available for a project in the cemetery or anywhere else in the city, if it wouldn't cost prohibitive, I think we ought to consider that.
If, we might even throw that out to the architect to ask if there's anything that we can keep it, keep it and do with it at the cemetery to represent the old wall, but inside the cemetery, even if they've made a smaller section somewhere...
It'll be fun.
Put it into the cemetery so we can keep the historical...
We could label it that it is the original wall.
That's true.
I think the big thing we wanted, before we go further, we had described this look to the council before, and most folks nodded their head, but we wanted to make sure that we told you again that this is the look that the arch, we've talked with the architects about, and want to make sure we don't bring you something that misses the mark.
Probably easier for them to do that than to try to replace it.
Probably less expensive too, I'd say.
Yeah, I'd say so.
It could be done.
Karen, those aren't, they're not actual stones either, you know, they're some kind of a mold that was poured.
It's kind of a cement.
Yeah.
I was thinking of something, I mean, I'll try to think of something too, that could be used for it, but just use it somewhere inside the cemetery that could be decorative, whether it's even making a, using them as a small wall for a flower bed, or something to do with that.
Well, just to keep the historical element.
Right, right, not to get rid of that part of it.
Sure.
Mayor, I've been involved with some projects where we've asked architects to do something similar to that, and they, sometimes they'll come back and give us three or four different possibilities of what the design could look like. I guess I would ask that same question, could they give us two or three or four designs of what the columns could look like? You know, columns can be pointed on top, they can be square on top, they can be soldered around the edges, you know, there's all kinds of, I mean, we wanted to, and I know you, we all agree we want it to look really nice, much better than what's there. But I appreciate you getting the rendering, because to me, a picture's worth a thousand words.
And having a few options to consider is always good.
And is there any possibility where you're thinking of that with the, with inside
the columns, that they could take enough of the blocks, the old blocks, to actually go up in the middle of the columns, and then do around it with a new, and then you still have your old incorporated with it?
They don't have to match, do they? They don't have to match.
Possible. That may be one of those options.
And it doesn't have to be every, every one, it can be every other one or something.
I mean, the proposal they gave us was pretty basic, so they may ask, we'd go back and say, hey, can you also give us this? They may have that, we can ask them to revise that, bring it back to you.
We wouldn't mind having two or three.
Yeah, because we're not going to change it for another hundred plus years.
We won't change it.
This is a hundred-year project.
No, we won't have anything to do with it after this.
Maybe we can get it stayed for two hundred years where it has to come down.
So, here's my question. We got, we got a proposal at ninety-five hundred dollars, so we could sign the contract with them tomorrow if we wanted. Rather than delay us getting them in here another two weeks, do you all want to say, all right, we'll approve it up to a certain amount?
Yeah.
So that when we go back and say, hey, we also want this done, and they say, okay, well, we have to revise our proposal up, that we've got, we already have approval to move forward on that?
I'll make a motion up to twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand?
Mm-hmm. They shouldn't, they shouldn't need that much, since the property does its own little of it.
Let's don't give them that much. I'm just trying to give them a little leeway.
You're giving them a lot of leeway, but yeah.
We'll shoot for fifteen.
That's what I was thinking, I'd say twelve, fifteen thousand.
Fifteen.
So, is the motion fifteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen is the motion, second motion made and seconded?
Seconded it.
Karen?
We're getting ready to do a budget here, come on.
So all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
But it does need...
We'll go in that direction, and we do think that if we get a timely response from the architect, then we can see this done this summer, this spring and summer.
Yeah.
Well, it needs to be, because nothing, the sidewalks close, it forces everybody to walk out into the streets.
Yeah.
I mean, we're thinking of the aesthetic part of it, but it's forced people to walk.
Safety issue as well, thank you. Robert and I talked today, and they have been busy on any sunshine day, when the weather's been cooperative, they've been filling potholes. So they are, as much as they can do, when the weather is pretty, they are doing potholes, and he wanted you all to know that.
I called Robert not too long ago, and I started talking to him, and I was talking about another issue, and I said, and I keep falling in potholes, and he said, well, where are they? And I'm going, I'll get back with you on that. Right on West Main Street, every time I leave my house and come back, they're on both sides, from Tom Scott's house up, and I about lost a tire in one, so I'm tickled to death that they're doing that. I'm doing this, they're going to think...
They're working, we, there are some places in town where if you see a deep pothole, we can deal with that. We can use coal patch, we can use the infrared, the heat element, and we can do deep potholes. What we can't do well are the big surface scaling things. Findley Drive, you all made, had complaints about Findley Drive, the blacktop failed, and it failed within the warranty period, so as soon as the blacktop opens, that street will be repaved under warranty. So we're looking at those, we're noting them for the contractor, we can fix deep potholes, but we can't fix big white ones yet.
They're harder to dodge.
Yeah, they're harder to dodge.
Look like I can't drive.
You can strangle them, can you?
No.
We've already had water not come up in public comments, I had a note to talk about water, but hopefully we addressed that enough. Also, I've received a letter, others of you may have received a letter, from one of our citizens who's a pretty dedicated recycler.
Uh, Mayor, I have copies, because he's sent it to me and asked me to do whatever I wanted to with the council, so.
Good. I had a conversation with him too.
He said that you did have a copy, and so I made copies for the council.
I kind of chuckled over who it was addressed to.
Oh.
Who's it addressed to?
Mayor Larry Prather.
Larry Prather.
Give it to him, okay?
Who knew?
The complaints are ones that we've all heard, and they are directly a result of our doing a single stream contract with Lexington.
Was this, this was in the paper, wasn't it? And I read this article.
He said he was sending it to the paper.
In the paper, yes.
So we have made no changes at the council level to alter this experience. Because we've chosen to do the single stream method to get us closer to curbside recycling, we don't have an alternative but Lexington's single stream waste.
Right.
For volume reasons.
Ian S. spoke for about twenty minutes.
And I'm aware that several citizens have shredded their paper and taken it in garbage bags to the recycling center and be turned, and have been turned away. These are not decisions you all have made, and these are not decisions I have made, but Lexington will accept only certain recyclables, and these are simply a part of a modern reality.
When we made our trip up to the recycling center, I was surprised at all the materials that they wanted. There's a lot of the stuff that goes up there ends up in the landfill anyway, because they just, there's just no market for it, there's nothing they can do with it. So I think that's what he was talking about in this letter here, is the items that Lexington just, there's no market for, and there's, they won't take it.
Well, his comment was talking about charging for recycling, how it's too high, because they don't take half of what they want to recycle, and he's right. You can't just put anything in your recycling bin.
But recycling has changed, from, from this, it has really changed, from when recycling started twenty, thirty years ago, to what recycling is now, it has really changed.
It's changed since we went to Ohio.
Uh-huh, because...
Drastically.
There used to be a market for recycling, and now the market is really not there anymore.
It's so glative, there's so much supply that the markets collapse. So I regret, and I'll be happy to talk with this gentleman, but, and I wanted to bring the letter to the council as well, because I know you all are hearing this, but these are not your decisions, they're decisions that Lexington has made on behalf of this program. But I'll have to tell my cousin Larry that, it's the first time that's happened.
I thought I saw something.
He missed the meeting.
Gee.
He did miss the meeting.
He never seems to show up, I don't know.
Also, it would, we would be remiss as a council if I didn't at least talk with you for just a minute about the school shootings in Flori- you for just a minute about the, the school shootings in Florida and just the concern that everyone has and, and that everyone, I think, is concerned about safety in our communities and school safety. I have had an opportunity to meet on several different occasions with Dr. Hubb and have talked about the school's response and the way they're dealing with things. We've also talked with Chief Bossy about, about our department and their relationship with the school and what we're doing about school resource officers. And I can tell you that, that our police department has been very proactive in, in reaching out to the school and working on issues long in advance of when we knew they were. This very violent incident that happened at the high school in the last week, it's important that the council know that the school and the police department had been monitoring this situation for six months and just a, a month before this incident occurred, the school officials brought in the families and all of these young ladies for a mediation session, a month before this occurred, and they thought they had it tamped down. You've read the news reports, Mitch Layer, one of our officers, was ten feet from the argument when it started and he immediately interceded with the two girls that started the argument and began to de-escalate the situation. You've seen the videos, just that fast, there were, there were three fights around with the uniformed officer there and, but between our officers, you, you also need to know that besides our officers being in the building and school personnel responding to where it was almost a one-to-one ratio of adults to students that quick, you also need to know that our first responders entered that building in two minutes.
There you go.
Not only were we on site, we had first responders entering that building in two minutes and I'm pretty darn proud of that.
Yeah.
Great job.
I wanted the council to know that we're continuing to get correspondence from citizens wanting to know what we're doing, what we're trying and, and people are emotional and they, they feel very strongly about this. I do believe that, that our police department is working closely with the school system and that as a council, we are responding as, as strongly as our police professionals think we can. And I'm sure Chief Bossy would be glad to ask her any questions. We just finished a police committee meeting before we came downstairs and this was the dominant theme in, in our conversation. Chief, anything you'd like to add to the things I've mentioned? It's all on our mind. Last thing I wanted to mention to you is Stacy, do they all have this material, Stacy?
Yes.
Oh, good.
And I've emailed it as well.
Good. So, Stacy has sent you all this information for the revenue forecasting exercise? It's not mandatory, but I can tell you this, Stacy and I really use your all's estimates when we're working on this budget. So, if, if you'd like to participate and if you can, I think she provided you with a Excel spreadsheet in the email, so you, you can just enter your stuff in that Excel spreadsheet and it's kind of a neat part of our budget process that not everybody does. And that is all the mayor's comments I've got.
There you go.
Let's see, item seven on your agenda, Mr. Bob Willhite coming before the council to get approval to purchase some flooring, but guys, here's what I have to tell you. Mr. Robert Willhite, after guiding our water company to incredible success and announced his retirement.
We don't accept it.
Oh, no.
We can't, we don't have to accept it, do we?
Let's take a vote, no.
Well, I think, what I was told from the water board when he announced his resignation, they threatened not to accept it.
When, when is your?
Five years.
Oh, there you go.
Five years, isn't it? Five years.
Five weeks. No, June first.
June first.
Sorry to hear that. You've done a fabulous job.
You've done a great job.
Wonderful job.
I've, I've enjoyed my time, there's been very few days I did not want to come to work and, but it's been twenty years and thirty-six years in the county and I'm ready to do something else now, so.
I don't blame you.
Well, we hope, we hope you've enjoyed coming to your council meetings.
And I did want to say, this council and the one before, ever since I've been general manager, your all supporters have been a hundred percent and I appreciate that so much. That has not always been the case in the past, but I do appreciate all your support for, for me and the water company and the water company employees.
We appreciate you.
We all work with the citizens of Georgetown.
That's right. When Bob took me aside just a couple days ago and shared this with me, all I could do is congratulate him.
Well, that's true.
He's leaving us in great shape.
Yes, he is. Yes, he is.
And he's honored, so, for you.
Bob's got a unique skill set that's definitely benefited the city and benefited the water company and, and like I said, we, we all certainly appreciate it, Mayor. Maybe, I don't know if we can get this sewer line project done before June or not, we might need to put you on retainer or something.
Consulting.
There'll be big issues.
He is our institutional knowledge on that.
Mr. St, I want to figure his agenda passed tonight.
I bet he will.
I don't know, there you go. Bob, now that, now that we thoroughly embarrassed you.
Oh, well, it's alright.
Three years ago.
This is the fourth and final phase of our building remodel and it's the quote for the flooring that Oser has been doing for us. They were the low bidders on the original bid and they kept the unit prices the same, it's just the difference of square feet and their quote for that is for twelve thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty-four cents.
Motion.
Second.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Everywhere.
Everywhere.
Give it to them.
Somebody's got a question, Bob, a little bit. We had a motion and a second.
What color is it?
Is this really necessary, Bob?
It's a brownish, grayish, mottled, marble looking stuff.
All right.
Good enough for me, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Bob.
Right, thank you all.
He knew.
That's funny.
Item eight on your agenda is for planning and zoning to present the comprehensive plan. Just by way of setup, I, I want you to know that three legislative bodies have already accepted the comprehensive plan, endorsed it. The other two cities and the county have already done so, we are the fourth legislative body to hear this presentation. We have this styled as a presentation of the comprehensive plan. I think when the fiscal court considered it, you presented it at a workshop where they can't vote and then came back for approval at a subsequent meeting. Given how much material is here, council may want to do that tonight and come back in two weeks to actually approve the document. It's a lot to absorb, so if you go ahead with your presentation with the understanding, we'll probably vote in two weeks.
Alright, that sounds good. And I realize you just got the hard copy tonight, we do also have the document up on our website, it's been up for a little while, so you can point that out to others if they have questions. As the mayor said, thank you for having me, Mayor, and members of the council. We have, this has been a long process, this isn't, we don't view this as the end of the process, but really the beginning of the implementation of the, of the plan. It started back in 2015, we had, we did a series of listening sessions and strategy meetings leading up to the kickoff of the plan, which we kicked off in early sixteen, 2016 with a big public meeting. After that, we formed steering committees based on the interest at that first public meeting and the, the ideas we had for chapters of the plan, which were, our original thought was to follow the ninety-one plan, which was the last time we'd really looked broadly at kind of all the areas that are affected by land use planning. So, we formed a series of steering committees, we worked through the steering committees and came up with our goals and objectives for the plan, which we brought to council and all the legislative bodies at the end of 2016 and got that approved. Essentially, this plan, this final document is fleshing out those goals and objectives and then also adding the, the future land use map and the land use elements that, that are required in the plan. I've got a PowerPoint to hit the highlights and I'm not sure if I did that correctly. Andrew, okay, I got it now. The right arrow. As I said, this, this process started back in fall of 2015 with some strategy meetings kicked off in sixteen. We, we adopted the goals and obje, got the goals and objectives approved in sixteen, looked at the future land use map in seventeen and kind of worked through this past year developing the final plan document. The draft is up on our website and it, it has been approved by the planning commission, the planning commission, the steering committee that was formed approved it, recommended approval, planning commission reviewed it and approved it in December of seventeen. We've actually taken it to fiscal court that got their approval, we're at Sadieville tonight, so, and so it's, it's really City of Georgetown and Sadieville left to approve. Once that's approved, once the final document is accepted essentially by all the legislative bodies, then it becomes the final, no longer draft, but the final conference plan that we use to evaluate new propos, new subdivision proposals, development proposals, but also to guide other kind of work that we do at the planning commission as far as new ordinance changes, new projects and other work that we do day to day. It's broken down into nine chapters. The first chapter is a context chapter, setting kind of where we are today, what are the trends we're seeing, what are the issues that are unique to Georgetown and Scott County. Then we have the seven chapters that follow, the seven steering committees that have guided the process and they're kind of a little bit unique in that they don't follow the traditional KRS state planning statutes require you to do three, there are three required elements in a comprehensive plan, there's land use, transportation and community facilities. Well, we've done those, but we've integrated them into these other chapters. So, community form includes land use and community facilities, infrastructure and public facilities includes community facilities and transportation. So, because these areas affect a lot of different things, we've, some of the chapters include multiple elements that we typically stand alone in the plan. But we've also looked at heritage, housing, human services, environment and economic development and those are chapters that were included because those are areas of interest in the community and those are things that came up in the steering committee and the, and the work we did prior to starting the process and we felt that those are important areas to focus on in Scott County, so that's why we included some of those and some of those are areas that have been addressed, were addressed in the ninety-one plan, including heritage, housing and environment and also economic development, I believe. So, we also were essentially looking at that old information and bringing it forward to the present. Each chapter has a similar layout, if you look at, if you, as you go through each chapter, so there's the goals and objectives start out the chapters and each one has not only the, the statement of the fundamental guiding principle for the chapter, but then the individual goals and objectives that were developed in the early phases. Then they each include a snapshot of where the community stands today and kind of the trends and issues facing the community in that, in that area. And then there are some chapters that include additional elements like the community forum includes the future land use map. I thought I'd highlight more specifically the community forum chapter and I'll just hit kind of some features of the other chapters as I go through it, just because the document is so long and has so much in it, I thought I'd give you all a time to look at it in between this meeting and the next and if you have additional questions on some of the specific elements in, in the plan, we, I, we could probably answer them next week. One thing that this, that we do every time when we update the conference of plan, we look at the future land use map and we have kind of an innovative planning technique that we use in Georgetown and it's used really in the whole Bluegrass area, that's, that's unique to the United States, really. It's the urban service boundary concept where urban development, development that requires sewers, requires kind of intensive transportation and other public facilities takes place within the urban service area. The area outside the urban service area then is, is restricted from urban growth. So, every five years, we look at that urban service boundary and make recommendations for expansion, contraction or realignment. Sadieville and Stampin' Ground already have a large urban service boundary in relation to their population and talking with Sadieville and Stampin' Ground, they didn't really want to make any amendments, expansions or contractions to those, so those essentially stayed the same and you can see it on the PowerPoint, they're a large area outside the, the current city limits. City of Georgetown also, in doing the analysis, there's, there's enough land area undeveloped, planned residential, planned commercial and planned industrial to accommodate growth in the next ten-year period. We update the plan every five years, so the recommendation with this plan update is not to significantly expand the urban service boundary, but to amend the property boundaries or the boundaries of the USB where they didn't make sense and that, that's where they cross existing parcels in unusual areas that create remnants outside the US, USB for, for parcels that are under one ownership. So, we amended, we increased the size of the USB slightly in Georgetown, in the areas that, oops, the areas that really were amended were the west, in west Georgetown, near the new improvements to four sixty by the high school. We extended the USB to the Elkhorn, so to Stampin' Ground Road, two twenty-seven, to, and then expanded the green belt around south of that area so that we can, there's no longer a gap in the green belt between the intersection of four sixty and, and the bypass to Stampin' Ground Road. If you want to follow, community forum is the second chapter, so it should be.
Page fifty?
Yeah.
That starts the forum highlights.
So, to review the changes in the USB, essentially expanding slightly to the west, to Elkhorn Creek, including the land south of, of, of the high school, the new high school property and Scott County Park. Realignment of the property or the USB boundary slightly to this, on the, the southern boundary, maintaining the green belt and filling in the green belt from the southern boundary all the way to the, or from the western boundary to the eastern boundary of Georgetown, maintaining that solid green belt line, which is a longstanding goal of the comp plan in ninety-one through present, to maintain that green belt line to the south and not extend into that area south of the existing green belt line.
Is that on page fifty-six?
Um, likely.
Georgetown urban service boundary and it shows the green?
Yes.
Okay.
So, what area, again, are you talking about that you're keeping the green?
I'm talking about the areas just south of town from Stampin' Ground Road, from the Elkhorn and Canerun Creek where they converge all along the southern boundary of Georgetown. boundary of Georgetown over to I seventy-five. That's the green belt, the extent of the green belt line. Um, eastern Georgetown, here east, east of Georgetown, the urban service boundary's always been the ridge of the lane run watershed. Uh, and the thinking behind that is that you can get, you can serve it with sewers without having to jump over the ridge and, um, have to pump, um, all that sewer back over the ridge. Um, that's, um, essentially east of Old Oxford Road, uh, until you get up near Abbey at Old Oxford and then it crosses Oxford Road and goes up to Cynthia Road. Maintaining that line as, as it is, um, and then the other increase is increasing slightly the industrial planned area north of Toyota. Uh, in the thought there was, there's this large area of planned industrial already with the USB kind of, uh, working its way in and out of that planned area. So, to kind of consolidate that area, um, that industrial area north of Toyota. Um, and then there was one request for inclusion in the, the USB after we had the draft map out and that was the area, um, west of, um, exit one twenty-nine, and I can't remember the name of the farm, but it was split by the old USB line, so it was partially in, partially out. So, the planning commission recommended that we include that whole farm in and, um, it was, it was planned commercial previously. We left the commercial, um, future land use designation in place for most of the farm, but then we added a residential buffer to the north, uh, between Moon Lake and this, this farm. So, overall slight increase in the USB area, but no inclusion of the area, uh, within the proposed second leg of the bypass, which is something that will have to be looked at, uh, in five years' time when we, when we do the next update. To give you a general breakdown, um, there's growth over the last ten years has been primarily in the city of Georgetown. So, single-family growth has been eighty percent in the city of Georgetown, um, twenty percent in the county. Commercial, um, growth is almost primarily in the city of Georgetown. Um, industrial growth also primarily in the city of Georgetown. Um, if you look multifamily growth, we don't allow multifamily outside the USB. So, the majority, I can't say all, but the ma- vast majority of multifamily growth is occurring in the city of Georgetown. Georgetown's the primarily pri- you know, the dominant urban area, but dominant by a, you know, great, great deal. So, um, but in looking at the, at the growth rates, even though we are the fastest growing community in the state as a proportion of population, uh, we do still have the, we still have the land area in the city Georgetown, well, in the urban service boundary of Georgetown to accommodate residential, commercial, industrial growth for the next ten years.
You have any idea with the residential growth, with all the things that have been talked about and where you're going this way and that way and expanding our city limits, what you're talking about, not multifamilies, but single house?
Single family.
Do you have any, just a ballpark?
As far as...
Things that have already been approved?
The amount of stuff already approved?
Yeah.
Um, I don't have the statistics right at my, you know, tip of my tongue, but we have, I think we have about seventeen hundred lots preliminarily approved, but haven't, there's zone, have zoning in place, have a preliminary plat approval and will have to come back through the planning commission for, for subdivision preliminary approv- for subdivision proof. There's about seventeen hundred acres, um, zoned agricultural, but planned residential that will have to come through the zoning process.
Seventeen hundred acres?
Yeah, I believe it's seventeen hundred. So, the process now, um, in two thousand and fourteen, we passed a sunset clause. So, any news, any new projects that come in and get preliminary plat, the process is you get preliminary plat approval, then you submit construction plans to the planning commission staff for review, engineering review, then you construct the infrastructure and then you can plat the lots and build.
That's what I'm interested in, is the infrastructure.
So, yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot approved that the infrastructure hasn't been built yet. Uh, as far as, uh, sub- vacant lots and existing subdivisions, it's down to about four hundred lots available.
I was gonna ask you that, cause at one time they were like almost five thousand existing lots.
Yeah. Well, I think that number five thousand was preliminarily approved. I think at one time we had about twenty-eight hundred.
Okay.
Single-family lots that were platted.
But now we have four hundred.
Yeah, now we're down to four hundred.
Wow.
So, I think we're gonna see a big push in the next, probably three, three to five years, new subdivision approvals. We have the Yancey Griffith Farm right now, working its way through the process. Um, and that kind of leads into my next, um...
Here's your, on your table on page twenty-nine, it says twenty seventeen, four hundred and thirty-six lots. Plated, city of Georgetown, plated vacant lots, four thirty-six on page twenty-nine.
Yep.
It's not there.
Okay.
It's not many.
No.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Yeah, and every year that fluctuates up and down as we get, as we get subdivisions built and the infrastructure put in and those lots platted. So, we add a certain, you know, percent, certain number of lots are platted every year, so, so it's, it's roughly at four hundred now, as of January eighteenth.
This is interesting.
So...
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I turned to page twenty-nine. I'm, I'm assuming Karen, um, table four, on page twenty-nine.
Mm-hmm.
What really sticks out to me is when you look at the estimate population in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-five and twenty-thirty.
Of course.
That's huge.
It's twelve years from now.
City council.
I mean, that's...
Um...
It's, it's big.
Yeah.
Just over the next twelve years.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, Scott County's projected to double in population in the next twenty-year period or twenty-five year period.
It's incredible.
Yep. So, that leads into a concept that was talked about, uh, when we were developing our ideas for the future land use map. Typically, the way it'd been done up until two thousand and six is we just designate a blanket urban residential for all the areas planned residential. Uh, and then urban residential can mean anything from, you know, one acre lots to sixteen-unit apartment buildings, sixteen units an acre apartment buildings. Uh, so the idea was to designate, uh, with this future land use map, designate neighborhood centers and those areas that are already existing kind of, um, urban centers, uh, in each of the kind of quadrants of the city and, um, recommend that higher density residential go within, either within these areas or within quarter-mile walking or bike, or walking distance or, um, biking distance if it's connected by, um, sidewalks and bike paths, um, multimodal connections. So, to kind of, um, instead of designated individual, designating individual parcels, higher density residential, to try and focus, um, higher density, um, development if it does occur to these, close to these neighborhood centers, so it can be, they can be built in a more multimodal way with these sidewalk connections, bike connections and so forth. So, we're not seeing isolated apartment complexes at the edge of town that maybe aren't, aren't easily served by, um, emergency services, um, you know, um, don't offer easy, um, connections to, um, daily needs of the residents. Uh, so, there are five of these neighborhood centers identified in Georgetown, um, in, and in addition, we've identified the downtowns of Georgetown, Sadieville and Stampin' Ground as also as kind of larger neighborhood centers. So, the centers other than downtown Georgetown are west Georgetown, focused, uh, near the campus of the new high school, um, and the existing schools, um, and, um, Cane Wood and, and, um, the other residential developments there. Uh, Champion Way at the new interchange, which there's a mixed-use project that's already been approved north, uh, north and south of the, of the new Lexus Way, um, but that could be easily tied into the surrounding neighborhoods. Uh, Connector Road and Old Oxford Road, which is the, essentially focused on the Finley property, which is zone commercial now and will eventually be developed and, um, a neighborhood center there could be tied into, could to dot, tie that commercial area into Rocky Creek and builds as the lanes run, improve the transportation in that area and kind of provide a focal point for, um, community facilities and, and transportation improvements. Uh, Amerson Lemons Mill Road, uh, area, which is the Amerson Farm, uh, project that's already planned for a mixed-use type, uh, town center, commercial area with, um, residential around it.
Church.
And a church, um, and a school and, you know, connection, there's connection through, uh, Pleasant, um, Pleasant View Road, I think. Is it Pleasant View Road? That's gonna eventually be connected to those other neighborhoods. Uh, so there's a lot of opportunity for improvements, um, in that area. Uh, and then south Georgetown's more focused on the Kroger area, um, kind of, and surrounding, uh, um, parcels to the south that can be connected through to that. So, those are the mixed-use centers. So, the idea was to try and, try and focus the higher density development if it does occur, um, to be more walkable and bikable and more, uh, closer to community, um, facilities and, and daily needs of the residents that, that'll live there. I've included some specifics on what are ideas for these, for these neighborhood centers. The idea is to come back and do a, um, a small area study for each of them, including the neighborhood residents surrounding, uh, in planning for these mixed-use integrating, like the types of land uses, what are the improvements that are needed in these areas? What pedestrian, bike, uh, park improvements would be needed? What other infrastructure needs are there there? How, how should they be connected to the surrounding neighbor, neighborhoods? What kind of buffers should be in place? What kind of transition should be in place? West Georgetown specifically, we included that area to extend the green belt through. So, when that is, um, part of it's annexed already, but, uh, when the rest of it's annexed that the green belt can be included in the zoning. Typically, uh, we try to get that, the area in the green belt zoned conservation when, um, those property owners come in to rezone, to develop the property. Um, so that specifically for the west Georgetown, those are some of the issues we'd be looking at, but these other neighborhood areas would have their own kind of individual, um, specific needs that would have to be addressed and the idea is to kind of include, um, the property owners and, um, the community in doing some of that planning for the, the detailed, uh, future land use map for these, these nodes and did it, yeah.
I did, I did have a question. I think it's a good idea and I think, you know, we had all talked about it. So, in it, where do you see this coming from? Like, who would, like, in terms of these centers, who would, who would do them? Would it be the builder or the community or the, I mean, the subdivision itself? Would it be like a...
I think it would be a builder that would have to come in and follow the future land use plan that was kind of developed by the community.
Oh, okay.
So, the idea is that these would be kind of, um, centers of, of development. So, development's gonna occur here, well, it's gonna lay out what we want to see and what the priorities are.
Yeah.
And what are those elements that we want to see included in any development? Then, then it would be the private, um, market or developer coming in to develop the property and following these guidelines.
Yeah, cause there's some subdivisions in Lexington where they have like a, a community center and, you know, pool and all that. So, that's what I was just kind of trying to get clear who, where it would come from.
Yeah, I think, um, if, if, like, it was identified a need for a community center in that area, um, then we could ask that a developer became in to, um, kind of reserve some land for a community center or whatever it is.
Reserve some space for that, so they would preserve. Yeah, cause that's what a lot of communities are going to and that also decreases the traffic, cause you're keeping people there and you're keeping people, you know, in, in their area, so...
Yeah, one of the priorities with, um, in Georgetown in particular is, uh, and we've been working on a lot of these, um, one thing we developed in this plan is an implementation chapter. So, we've got us, yeah, a long series of projects that are tied to the goals and objectives and, um, the plan itself that we've kind of, as we, as we work through the steering committees, we've dealt, developed this list of, um, projects that we'd like to see implemented and we've, we've included those in the last chapter. Well, one of the priorities is a bike-ped plan, um, to get that in place. So, if new development comes in, we can, we can see some of those improvements made by the developers up front, or at least reserving the easements for connections. Um, we've also talked about, uh, in the plan, um, developing, um, standards for commercial development, kind of architectural standards. And we've, we've actually been working on, we, we've, we've got those, a draft of those in our office. We've got a draft of the bike-ped plan. Um, we've got a draft of open space standards for new residential development. So, we've kind of been working on these, some of these ideas in the plan, but, uh, once this is adopted, we'd like to, um, kind of work with city council to, um, kind of prioritize, prioritize what, what things you want to see us working on and what you want to see us bring before you. But the bike-ped plan, commercial, um, standards for commercial districts, um, and open space standards are three things we've kind of got in the, in the pipeline. We've already, we've already got them complete essentially and we'd like to move forward on them.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sounds good.
What does the quarter-mile buffer, if you're on the inside of it or the outside of it, how does that, how are you impacted?
Uh, the quarter-mile buffer is the average distance of somebody who's willing to walk, uh, to get someplace that they want to go to. So, you're impacted if you're within it, then you're within one of these neighborhood centers if you're in the buffer. But we've also included language in here that if you connect to one of these buffers with, um, other bike paths, sidewalks, that, um, and you provide a, you know, obviously a reasonable development that's, um, meets the other goals of the planning commission and, uh, city, then, um, it would be an appropriate place for higher density. So, within those buffers or connected to those buffer areas is what is kind of the way we...
Back on, on page fifty-six, so the total number of acres that are being proposed to come into the urban service boundary is, what, seven hundred and sixty? Does that sound right?
Yes. Yeah, it was five something, then we added that farm to the north.
Okay. So, is there, is there something in here or is there something you can provide, like an overlay that shows what wasn't in and what's now being proposed? Cause I know there was a lot of discussion, controversy, whatever you want to say, from people that own property that were trying to get it in and it'd be helpful, I'd like to see it. I think we all have a, you know, responsibility to see, you know, if we're gonna vote on it, what is, what is actually coming in and what isn't coming in.
Okay. Yeah. We have those slides, actually. I just thought it'd be too, too much.
I think that's, to me, that's, it's one of the most important elements, really.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I can, I can either bring that next time and show it in a PowerPoint or I can print out, yeah, I can, we have an overall, we'll just have to scale it up, like eleven by seventeen, we can, we can send it out.
These maps encompass so much territory that it's, sometimes it's difficult to pin... These maps encompass so much territory that it's, sometimes it's difficult to pinpoint the changes. So if you can focus in, what, I mean, send it to us, I guess if we have questions we can ask, but it'd be nice to see what, what, yeah, what areas are coming in.
I was just going to kind of hit quickly the highlights of the other chapters. Infrastructure and public facilities, we looked at transportation, we looked at other infrastructure needs. One thing we did is identify those, those projects, those, I guess, priority projects that came up throughout the steering committee process. And we've, I'm showing those in this PowerPoint ma, I mean, this map, but there are other projects in there. I mean, there's a lot of projects, smaller projects that don't show up in this map but are listed out, but one's the Legacy Trail project. I mean, that's been an ongoing desire to get that extended to Georgetown and we've, we've had a grant application in to get it extended through the horse park to the tunnel for three years now. I'm not sure if it's going to be funded this cycle. If it's not, then we may need to look at a different, maybe try and do a little bit different segment or something a little different. Dennis Anderson is putting in a portion of the Legacy Trail through the Amerson Farm property as he develops that out so that, and that's in kind, that can be used to get grant money. I mean, if we were able to swing it, I mean, that's enough in kind to do all the way to the horse park. The Lexus Way extension's been identified by the planning commission multiple times as a priority project for that residential area, Pleasant Valley, Cherry Blossom, everything on Old Oxford would provide a kind of connector road over to major thoroughfare and the interstate. Old Oxford Road needs to be at least improved for safety reasons. And there's multiple subdivisions that are yet to build out on Old Oxford. The northern leg of the bypass, although that area is not, there's no residential or urban development planned in that area now. That's been a long desired project and I think it's funded now, so it's moving forward. And then multiple other projects that have, we've talked about before, but including improvements on Main Street, East and West Main. Heritage chapter, we've talked about doing a cultural resources plan and that's identifying not only historic structures, but also culture, cultural resources in the county that aren't necessarily on the national register, like stone fences, scenic features, scenic byways, and including having inventory, those mapped and available for the public, but also for us when we review kind of new development as it comes in to protect those resources. Human services, Candace was actually the chair for this, this group. We kind of identified areas that the needs, kind of the quality of life needs in different areas and what, what are some of the things, different, different areas need to improve the quality of life or to provide needed services to those areas. So we've kind of mapped those and that, this chapter is more about kind of quality of life issues. Environment, we've updated the previous, we brought forward the previous environmental chapter that hasn't been addressed in 25 years. We've kind of mapped all our environmental, environmentally sensitive areas. This map is essentially just to use to identify those areas of environmentally sensitive nature that are already protected. So we developed a rural preserve, rural reserve and kind of a green space map that helps us review new subdivisions as they come in and also identifies those environmentally sensitive areas. This is county, if you look, county owned property, state owned wildlife management area, that green is the Royal Springs Aquifer and then I, flood plains and other in environmentally sensitive areas. That north-south dividing line is that change in kind of geography between the north and the south, the, the edge of the inner bluegrass and the start of the soils change and the topography's changed at that line. Economic growth, this is, I've just included some of the goals that are in the plan and the text kind of flashes this out. And there are, there are also items in the implementation chapter. So purge agricultural economic growth, create more local jobs and job opportunities and improve our image as, as a good industrial location. There's also a focus on developing incubator and providing more flexibility and opportunity in the lanes run business park. Implementation, so that's kind of a rough review of the individual chapters and you can look through them if you have any other questions, we can maybe.
Who put this, who put this together?
Did a good job.
We, we did it in office, which is, is sometimes hard to do with, with the other duties we have and the thing, we had a little staff turnover during the year. So, yeah, it was all done in office.
He did a very nice job with it.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's very well done.
Presentation's great.
A lot of reading.
Figured we saved about $150,000 by doing it in, in office.
Wow, that's awesome.
Yeah, so we tried to, you know, include as much of the input as we could from the steering committees. I think we got a lot of, a lot of good participation and we're, it helped us quite a bit. The implementation chapter is something new that's in this. It's not new to planning by any means or conference of plans, but it's new to this conference of plan. We've identified 58 action items from the steering committee, from feedback we got from the public at our public meetings, from the legislative bodies and from just interaction we've had with people. Our idea with the implementation portion is to pull all the steering committees back together. A lot of these implementation items are things that the staff, planning staff can do or does on a daily basis, like draft new ordinance change, proposed ordinance changes, do small area studies, review, you know, new projects to meet our, these goals. But some things we don't do, I mean, like some of the quality of life stuff, some of the economic development stuff, I mean, we're a pretty small staff. So our idea is to pull all the steering committees together that worked on putting this plan together and form action committees and let them take over kind of some of these action items that they want to, if they want to prioritize and, and lead the process, kind of get some of these things done that were, some of these action items that we developed working with these steering committees. We kind of like to give them the opportunity to do that. So we don't, we're not in charge of trying to get all these things done. Plans updated every five years, so it's kind of a short window. It's kind of like getting elected to council, you get elected and then turn, turn around, there's another election.
We only have two years though. Five years is.
So we kind of like to put it in the hands, some of these things in the hands of a group that could carry forward and follow through.
I think that's a really good idea because in reading through this and having been involved, it's so vast and there's so much and, and having the individual groups kind of get together and prioritize, I think would really just, because, I mean, you all are just inundated and, you know, and there's just, there's so, I like about the economic incubators and all that. And I didn't even, you know, realize that.
Yeah.
I think there's just so many good ideas that just need to put them forward.
Yeah, that's, that's one, we've got a lot of action items in there, a lot of good ideas, but we need to move forward and do as much as we can to implement, make some positive change. And what we don't get done, we can carry forward to the next plan.
That's right.
Yeah.
Joe, I noticed the, the, the reservoir park was kind of identified in here. Is all that territory still, I guess, being preserved and kind of off limits for development?
Yeah, we identified an action item in there to do a conservation plan or a long range plan for the use of the reservoir property. But right now it's, you know, it's all kind of, it's open for public use.
Sure.
I think they allow hunting and there's the scoldbuster.
Bike riding, all that, yeah.
And there's horseback riding trails, so it's, it's, it's open for use by Scott County residents, but it's not really promoted and, you know, we kind of like to at least do a management plan for it so we can, we can kind of develop a, a long-term use strategy for it. But it is still all county owned property and still controlled by the county.
And he could still own a reservoir.
What's that mean?
It could still be a reservoir.
Well, hopefully it will be someday. I mean, you know.
Yeah.
Hadn't given up on that.
No.
Yeah, we didn't give up on it in the comp plan either. I think we, that's in there too.
Hopefully Georgetown will be here forever, so you know, who knows? Who knows?
So anyway, to finalize that thought, we're going to get, after we get all the legislative bodies to adopt, accept it and adopt it with any changes, I mean, if we're still at, even at this point, we'd accept suggestions and we can make changes. If they're major changes, we'd have to take it back to planning commission for reapproval and take it back to legislative bodies, but we're still open to comment and we can make, you know, we can make changes. We can add action items, we can, we can take action items out, I suppose, but prefer to add them. So we'd like to get it approved by all the legislative bodies and then we'll get the, we'll get the steering committees back together and review the chapters with the individual groups that helped develop the chapters.
Well, you did a good job.
You did well.
Thank you very much. Matt's here, he was just up in Sadieville. They, how are they doing? They approved it, Sadieville? So.
He got Alice Sadie the other day good, right?
Well, it, it's, it's helpful to know that the report is this comprehensive and that it, it is online and it reads good online. So anybody that you run into, you can refer them to the, to the website version of this. And Joe, we'll plan on, if you could be with us at the next meeting.
So I agree between now and then.
Yeah.
She's taking it, she's taking it with her on vacation.
If it won't make my weight, it's too heavy. Kind of heavy.
And this isn't the final.
If you have a layover.
This isn't what it's going to look like.
It's good for a play.
It's okay. Just put it in your purse, Karen.
We'll take this one for ours, okay? It looks great. You don't need another for us.
And, and that, that extra map that David asked about would be helpful for the council if you can get that there back. Any other questions?
Kind of what stands out to me on page 92 about the historical data, about how the per capita spending per person, how the, you know, how the city's doing, you know, with less money for each person. It's about the capital, you know, the capital improvement plans, so just the way our population's growing and our budget has stayed tight, you know? I mean, it stayed really well in and just that.
Still serving the county.
Yeah, still serving, but you know, having to do it with a lot less money, so.
Well, and the increase in people coming, you just, we're going to have more people, we need more services, we need more police, we need more fire, emergency schools. I mean, where's that money going to come from?
Sobering.
I mean, with growth comes cost.
Sobering.
It's scary.
This is great, thank you.
This is a great presentation.
A lot went into it.
Thank you.
A lot.
All right. Joe, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Glad you made it back safe.
The wild of Sadieville.
Thank you. Item nine on your agenda under city attorney, we've got two items. The first one is second reading of a zone change for the crossings at Windermere. Please come forward. And David, I think there's a, there's a handout.
Well, he, he, he just smiled when he seen that piece of paper.
Nick Perkley Osco again here on behalf of the applicant. We were here, I guess, at the last meeting and there was some discussion, presented a PowerPoint, same one that was shown to the planning commission, explained the project and what was being proposed and answered questions. And one of the items that came up was a point that the entrance did not show a median, a potentially grass landscape median. And then both the landscape architect and myself, we went back to applicant and he agreed he would go ahead and commit to officially doing that.
That's great.
What I passed out was just the initial idea of what it would look like. This is still in the planning stage, so it could be a little bit different than that at the end of the day, because they stuff to connect with a detailed plan, but they have committed to doing that and to address that, that concern. But beyond that, I couldn't answer any questions as respects not only that commitment, but also anything else with the, with the project as well.
I have a couple of questions. I missed last week's meeting, so I apologize for asking you these questions. I should know before I ask, but you're taking, what you're doing is you're taking away some of the commercial part of it and turning it all then into apartment? Is that what you're doing for the health section to be apartments?
There could be two outlets along the front that would be, one is for retail, the other would be a show's restaurant, so that would maintain the, the retail look along the Harris Pike there, but then behind it be, be essentially the third phase that will be not part of the same, it'll be a separate community, you have a separate clubhouse, separate pool and all that, but it would be right next to the other, other Windermere project.
Same as what you've done so far.
Right. And then really the difference is, I think, the, the first two phases were predominantly almost all two bedroom apartments, but you have some one bedrooms, three bedrooms and offer a little more variety as well. But it would be, it would be unrelated or different ownership, but it would be the very same kind of style design and, you know.
Clarify on that, did you say related ownership, but not exactly the same?
Well, no, what it is, the applicant is the same builder, same developer. They had, after they had finished the, what I call the first two phases, sold those. It was now owned by a different group.
Okay.
But it is the same group that's building this one as the other ones. I mean, that, it could be sold to the same group eventually or potentially could be its own standalone.
Nick, I went out and looked at it and the entrance, your existing entrance really looks nice, you know, it's got the stone wall, it's got a lot of landscaping and I really do appreciate you going to bat and getting this incorporated into it. And, and the reason so, Karen wasn't here at the last meeting, but she's going to have to drive by this every day. And so is Mark Showalter down there. I was just trying to help you out.
Mark's not there no more.
Mark's moved.
Oh, that's right. Well, he likes to drive out there and check on the lights, so.
There you go.
That's true.
And I'm sure this entrance will be well lit. So Nick, it's more than just sod, I guess, right? I mean, there'd be like some trees or something on top of that landscape you burn.
I think the, what we had mentioned when I was, had emailed Andrews, it'd be landscaped in or grass or, I mean, it'd be something in, in that as well. They're not, I mean, this is going to be the entrance to not only the commercial portion of development, but also their, their apartments. So they're, they're definitely want to make sure it is.
The other one looks really nice, so.
It's better looking than our neighborhood. I, I live, as David said, the neighborhood that's right across from the entrance of where the apartments are now, and it's much prettier than our entrances into our neighborhood with the apartments.
I mean, generally all those, like, you know, that, in order to rent apartments, get the rents they want and to lease them up, they, you know, entrance is always very, very important.
You know, the other thing Karen mentioned is the fact that you're doing away with a little bit of the commercial property in exchange for bringing in the residential. But quite honestly, I think anyway, the, the commercial lots that you're creating will probably be a little bit more appealing than the whole big piece of commercial property because to sell commercial lots, unless you're on a main street or Broadway, it's difficult to do without an anchor. So anyway.
Especially if it's a second tier. I mean, you have the, if you have lots in the front, then additional retail behind it or portion behind it, those are the ones that really struggle and tend to have problems.
So I like your plan.
You know, it's really nice to see phase one, phase two, phase three be almost identical as far as building it out.
Because I do not typically vote, I mean, I might as well say it because it's my, if you watch my voting record, I do not typically vote for apartments. But I do live right across the street from, from the current apartments. The reason I will vote yes for your development is the fact that you're containing apartments within apartments.
Right.
I like that. I don't like having apartments and then the residential right there and they're connected. You're separated into your own and since I live across the street, I've watched how the apartments have been handled and things and it seems like things have done. the apartments have been handled and things, and it seems like things have done very well with it, so.
Sure. No, I understand that question. And this actually also helps the existing apartments because it'll add another means of, you know, ingress and egress and into and out of the...
Yes, because sometimes they don't understand when you're going this way, this side gets to go first instead of that.
With, with all this joy, shall we have, shall we read the ordinance?
I think so. Moving on. Move on. The original?
Well, we read it at the last meeting. Did we read it at the last meeting?
We did. We just had a little further discussion tonight.
Mayor, I'll make a motion for approval based on the...
We still have to read it twice.
We still have to read it and then do our...
Dave's excited about this. He don't want that grass getting grown too quick here. Go on here.
An ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property containing 6.0390 acres located at 3189 Paris Pike in Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky, from B2 to R3. Summary, amends the official Georgetown Scott County zoning map to change, show a change in the zoning classification for certain real property consisting of certain, of a total of 6.0390 acres located at 3189 Paris Pike in the city of Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky, as more particularly described in Exhibit A attached here too and incorporated by reference here M from B2 Highway Commercial to R3 Residential. Provides for several will to repeal inconsistent ordinances and an effective date upon passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office under North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, 403244, at www georgetown ky.gov. Introduced to publicly read for the first time February 12, 2018. Publicly read the second time February 26, 2018.
Great. Is there a motion?
Whatever you want to motion.
That's fine. I'll make a motion for approval.
Thank you. Sponsor makes a motion?
I'll second.
There's a second? And if there are no further questions, we'll call the roll.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Tingleseems?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mrs. Singer-Erdley?
Yes.
Mrs. Butcher-Comey?
Yes.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate you sitting through a long meeting. It truly is that.
That it is.
Item B on, on, under City Attorney is a, kind of an interesting resolution that we bring to you. It's to ask for a grant that requires a 10% match up to, it doesn't require it, but we think we will be more competitive if we submit it with a 10% grant. The purpose of the grant would be to provide the matching funds if we get a community development block grant.
Okay.
And that match could be as much as a couple of hundred thousand.
Good.
If we got the CDBG.
Right.
This grant would help us with our match. If we don't get the CDBG, we don't activate this grant.
Sure.
So it just, it's a no-brainer that, that for $20,000 could leverage us the $200,000 match for a possible CDBG.
Consultant recommend this, Mayor?
She brought it to our attention.
I like the idea. I think it's an investment.
They just opened the window on this grant about two weeks ago and it's a very short...
Time to do it then.
So it, it may not be, mean anything if we don't get the CDBG, but if we do, this is our match.
Yeah. Need a motion? Motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Second. If there are no questions, it's a resolution. We can voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Ms. Clark, we have the first reading of our mid-year budget amendment with the Finance Committee acting as cosponsors. And I think Stacy's done a really good job of catching the things that we've approved and done, and she's incorporated on back end of this budget. We also recognize, as we bring you this revised budget, that right at the end of the year, we'll need to bring you yet another budget revision. And that budget revision will be necessary as we fund the Lanes Run Business Park expansion and begin our discussion about the 911 system. So we'll have an opportunity to recognize those projects in yet another budget amendment, but for tonight, Stacy's got a pretty, pretty good list of what we're neatening up here.
Give them a brief, I'll just give you a brief overview. As the mayor said, I have each fund broken down into previously approved transactions where applicable. I've tried to include the municipal order number, so you can see when that was approved, a few new requests, and then if we're increasing or decreasing anything. With the general fund, you will see, I have shown our beginning, that's our budget balance, not our fund balance, but, so our, we had projected our expenses exceeding our revenues. The majority of what you see in the general fund, both previously approved, but the biggest expenses are the used fire truck you approved in last year's budget, but it didn't arrive until this year, so we have to pay for it this year. So didn't spend that money last year, we're gonna spend it this year. And then the Holly Hawk Stormwater Project was approved in last year's budget, but it's getting paid for in this year's. So just kind of deferred those costs for a little bit, but that's the majority of the increase that you see in the general fund expenses. The new requests that you will see in a few of the funds, I looked at all of our motor fuel accounts, and if we've had a slight uptick occasionally throughout this year where the cost has gone up. Also, because we went with the enterprise lease option, those vehicles, because we didn't go with that until October, they've delayed getting their new vehicles, whereas normally they go buy them right in July, but we didn't do that until a few months later. So you'll see motor fuel increases to make sure they've got enough to get through the end of the year. And then our workers' comp, we did a mid-year billing adjustment with workers' comp to try to avoid a ding in our audit next year. So that was an unplanned expense with the workers' comp audit. So hopefully next year, we won't get a bill when we have to audit. In addition to those, which you'll see in several funds, for the City Hall, we had originally budgeted $20,000 for an architect to do kind of a needs assessment, needs assessment, and just kind of some preliminary schematics. We've added $47,000 to that for a total of $67,000. I think they hope to bring you a contract soon.
Yeah, just by way of explanation, we've, we've been working with the architect that was selected through the RFQ, and they have brought us a proposed contract to evaluate the building, create the scanned digital version of City Hall. We don't have many old plans for the building, so they brought in people who are gonna actually scan everything and can create it digitally. That total contract is, is $67,000. I did not bring it to you tonight to consider that contract because I didn't feel like I had done enough work with the council to understand it yet. I want the Finance Committee to understand it and have a recommendation and be able to talk about it. So you will get another cut at this when we bring you that contract, but knowing that that contract was coming, it made no sense to present you with a budget that would be immediately out of balance when I'm bringing you that contract. So I asked Stacy to go ahead and anticipate it in this budget so that when we bring you the contract, you can know that, that it's been funded. You can still turn it down, but we're increasing the amount that we have budgeted, is, is that explanation. The, the big decrease, you'll notice, under the Police Department and vehicles, typically, as Stacy said, right after the budget's approved in July, we make a whole series of capital expenditures. And because we're now using the Enterprise Fleet Management System, we were able to take away, we were able to use this much money of the police's capital budget, even though they've actually gotten more vehicles through the Enterprise Fleet Management Program than they would have gotten with this investment. And we think the Police Department's whole, even though we've taken a little bit of their money away.
On the next page, the Business Park Fund, we're just bringing in the million dollars that we received to go forward with land purchases. Obviously, one of those purchases has already been approved, and then we're just kind of adding the rest to the budget for future land purchases. Municipal Road Aid, LGEA Fund, and Drug Forfeiture. When we were in the budget process last May, we were estimating what we thought the ending balances of those funds would be. For MAP and LGEA, we had just a little bit, little bit more at June 3017 than what we thought, so we're adding that back into the budget so that we can use it this year for road projects. And then for the Drug Forfeiture Fund, they made some expenditures while I was in the process of doing the budget, so they actually had a little bit less at June 3017 than what we anticipated. It doesn't hurt them any, they had plenty of money in there, it's not like they've overspent it yet, but just wanted to make those adjustments. For the Grant Fund, just cleaning up a few minor grants for amounts that changed once we received the final awards. The DRMO expense, that's just where, when they receive the DRMO equipment from the military, occasionally they get permission to sell that, and we use the Grant Fund to track that revenue and then we have to put it back in the budget so they can spend it, so we just kind of keep a running tally on that. Environmental Services Fund, you will see the previously approved transactions. As I mentioned, the motor fuel and workers' comp going up in a few of the funds, and I was able to use some of the money in the sanitation vehicle budget to offset some of those costs, but not all of it. On the next page, you have the Cemetery Fund, workers' comp again. Obviously, we had a little different conversation tonight, but I had initially put $12,000 in for the design services for the fence, so if it goes above that, then we'll catch it in June with our next budget amendment. And then for Capital Projects, this is just cleanup. We had approved and budgeted for Lemon's Mill in last year's budget, but the majority of that is actually being spent this year, so we're bringing that back in. And the 125 West Clinton remodel kind of went into the first part of this fiscal year as well. So just kind of cleaning that up for some projects that were approved or started last year, but trailed over into this year. And as the mayor said, a couple of big projects yet to come that we'll catch in June once decisions are made on those.
Sounds good. If there are any specific questions for Stacy, would, she'd be glad to answer them for me? If not, we can go ahead and ask Stacy to do first reading.
First reading. An ordinance limiting the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018. Summary, general fund, prior year revenues are increased by $511,040.23. Grant revenue has increased by $35,000. Intergovernmental revenue has increased by $97,401.91. Other revenue has increased by $92,425. General government expenses are increased by $18,475. Council expenses are increased by $45. City clerk expenses are increased by $40. Police expenses are decreased by $35,551. Fire expenses are increased by $294,824. Dispatch expenses are increased by $119,483.82. Code expenses are increased by $5,320. City engineer expenses are decreased by $4,535. Transfers out are increased by $125,840.32. Capital expenses are increased by $211,925. Business Park Fund, other revenues are increased by $1 million. Expenses are increased by $1 million. Grant Fund, state grant revenues are increased by $11,427. Federal grant revenues are increased by $4,363.27. Other revenues are increased by $12,098.09. Police department expenses are increased by $16,461.36. Fire department expenses are increased by $8,795. Community development expenses are increased by $2,632. MAP Fund, prior year revenues are increased by $108,098.86. Expenses are increased by $108,098.86. LGEA Fund, prior year revenues are increased by $5,116.36. Expenses are increased by $5,116.36. Drug Fund, prior year revenues are decreased by $19,075.91. State expenses are increased by $15,748.67. Federal expenses are decreased by $34,824.58. Environmental Services Fund, prior year revenues are increased by $58,158.50. Intergovernmental revenue is increased by $5,427.50. Transfers in are increased by $111,185.26. Sanitation expenses are increased by $52,731. Recycling expenses are increased by $10,855. Stormwater expenses are increased by $111,185.26. Cemetery Operating Fund, intergovernmental revenue has increased by $6,827.50. Transfers in are increased by $6,827.50. Cemetery expenses are increased by $13,655. Capital Projects Fund, prior year revenues are increased by $7,916.53. Intergovernmental revenues are increased by $473,671.68. Transfers in are increased by $7,827.56. Capital expenses are increased by $489,415.77. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. This ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 100 North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324, or at www georgetown ky.gov. Publicly introduced and read for the first time February 26, 2018.
Thank you. Hey, I missed a couple of numbers in the first paragraph. Could you read that again?
Oh. Hit him. Take your papers and smack him.
Constitute first reading. Stacy, thank you very much. Okay. And we'll do second reading at our, at our next meeting. Now, we're at the part of our meeting where we would like to have an executive session. And Andrew, do you have the language?
Mayor, I move to enter into closed session pursuant to KRS 61.8101B to discuss the sale or acquisition, actu, whatever, fine, of real property. Sale or getting rid of real property.
Most has been made.
It's land.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Everybody stretch, we'll be...
Thank you.
Is she turning it on then?
Oh.
Laurie.
Actually, I have a gentleman that lives at 107 Penn Avenue. And he has a mowing issue that was brought to our attention last year. And he's actually, he used to take care of the property himself, and now he's ill and unable to do it. But part of it is, he said it's owned by the city, but he had been taking care of it, and he can't physically do it anymore. So he brought me his deed, because I think he looked into it last year and said it was his. But he brought me his deed, and it talks about the city of Georgetown by deed, and that that property still was maintained the right of way with it. So I got his deed. So he will look into that and see what, uh, see what it, uh... So, I got his deed, so he will look into that and see what, uh, see what it's, uh...
I did it.
Yeah, so it looks like it, it used to belong to the railroad company? I didn't even know the railroad, railroad went over on Penn Avenue on that street, but I forgot about that. But it was part of it, and the city kept the portion that he's not wanting to mow, because it's a hill and it's real hard for him now. Actually, it's impossible for him now, so...
My front back on Broadway is real steep. Can I get public works?
What about public works?
Millie, yours is pretty steep, too.
Oh, public, my hill is terrible.
It's terrible.
Well, I've got some I like that.
We'll look at that, and then, and then get you an answer.
I have to put a rope on it.
Anything else?
Well, I did want to ask a question, and I'm very proud of what the police department and everybody did at the school day. But I've been asking, people have been asking me about the safety of the schools and that kind of thing. And I'm just wondering, has there been talk about having metal detectors there? And maybe Vietnam, or vets being a part of, maybe outsourcing to them to be there to, to help monitor the metal detectors? It's just a thought.
Yeah, I, uh, I know what I read in the paper about the school board meeting, and I know there was some discussion about metal detectors. I'm not sure how far it got. I think one school board member said that it would, if they use metal detectors, it'd take them till noon to get all the students into class. But I, I know the school board's at least having that conversation. I don't know what the outcome's been.
Well, I appreciate it, and I can talk to the school board people as well. And, uh, but thank you, Georgetown Public Works.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Chuck? Mark?
There is a sinkhole or water ship at, uh, Gatewood?
That's me, too. Lucas Kravitz called me, and there's a sinkhole.
I was just gonna say it's public work. Apparently, we filled this in the past, and it's, it's dropped out again. Do you know what I'm talking about, Mary?
I don't. We, we have an occasional sinkhole where we have to fill it with dense grade and then put some dirt back.
That was mine, too.
So you, you know where it is? Good, thank you. Anything else?
No.